Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting in Tallahassee. We'll start out with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I'd like to do a moment of silence for President Carter, please. Thank you. Okay. Yes. As all that being said, a couple of things I want to mention is, before we get into the meeting, is that massive fires going out, and having your thoughts, out in California right now. It's pretty devastating what's going on out there. Twelve-hundred acre, twelve-thousand acre burn in LA. New Orleans houses lost. Pretty sad. And for our own area, here in Dutchess County, has been many chimney fires. So, let's behoove the people of Tallahassee who have burned wood to get their chimney cleaned. So us, as firefighters, don't have to come to your house when your chimney's in fire and the brutal cold. So, that all being said, we'll move into, continue on with our public hearing for Troutback Phase Eight Indoor Pool, 115 Leedville Road. You're up, Rich.
Okay, the Troutback Phase Eight Pool renovation is basically taking the Troutback Wellness Amenity Corps and improving it. This was part of the original ARP plan, and now this phase is actually bringing that part of the project to life. The, what's included, what was proposed in the ARP and what's proposed now, is renovating the existing pool, renovating the existing bathhouse, renovating the existing snack bar, and constructing a new indoor pool. The, as we've discussed, the new indoor pool will actually go within the footprint of the existing amenity barn where they'd have functions, and then the amenity barn is then been moved so it fits in with the outdoor pool snack bar, and that stays in the same footprint of the, where the existing pool deck is now. So basically, the whole area was, has been worked over multiple times to reduce impacts as much as possible, shrink the water usage, and have the least amount of impacts possible.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Will the pool be any larger or smaller than the original?
It's roughly the same size, the outdoor pool.
So it's not going to increase the amount or volume of water that's going to be used?
Correct. The indoor pool is actually smaller than what was part of the ARP.
Okay.
That was brought down, and that's why we have a reduced water usage and a reduced footprint.
Okay.
But the outdoor pool stays about the same.
Because the water usage at one time was a question.
Yes. Yeah, this proposal actually saves 240 gallons of debt.
Thank you.
You're keeping the outdoor pool, you're just building another indoor pool, or you're closing up the outdoor pool?
The outdoor pool is going to be actually reconstructed.
Okay.
So the, but in the same basic footprint, but the shape is slightly different. The bathhouse is going to be on one side, and the snack bar is going to be on the other side, where the bathhouse and the snack bar are side by side right now.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Is there, we got, should there be a public climate?
Yeah, of course.
Is there any other public climate? Anyone else have any comment in the public over here as we go on?
This is for Troutback.
For Troutback.
Can anybody sign a paper over there?
No.
No.
Of course not.
Okay.
Technically speaking, Mr. Chairman, just to take a step back, you actually need to formally open the public hearing. You adjourned it last meeting, so, just a simple oral resolution to open a public hearing, that's all.
We move, we open the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? All right.
Sorry to be that guy.
Technicality, you gotta do it, it's okay.
It's good.
Now, is there any public comment? Have I seen, see no public comment? Any board comments? See none of that? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
You say? All in favor?
Aye.
So carries. Now what? Got that part done.
I guess I could speak to it, and John can fill in technical details. We've reviewed what Troutback has provided, and have shared with the board previously our thoughts on it. Consistent with the, this Phase Eight is consistent with the Adaptive Reuse Plan that the board previously approved. It is consistent with the SEACER Negative Declaration that the board previously approved, so no further SEACER reviews required, in our opinion. And it's also consistent with the site plan findings required by the zoning law. So with that, we, our recommendation would be to move forward with approval, and we have drafted a resolution to that effect for the board's consideration.
And just for the record, I did have a comment memo back in December, and the majority of our items have been satisfactorily resolved, but for a couple that will show up as conditions, such as border health and DEC approvals for the pool and the wastewater disposal and water system improvements.
So with that concern, can we move on?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I, if it was not clear, I concur with Paul's assessment that this is ready for a resolution of approval and adoption of the SEACER consistency findings.
Good. Do you want to read the resolution?
I, I'll do that.
Okay.
Just, now therefore be it resolved that based on the application made pursuant to Article Nine of the zoning law and New York State Town Law, the Planning Board hereby grants site plan review approval for Phase Eight of the ARP and approves of site plans for Phase Eight prepared by RENIA Engineering, last revised November 25, 2024. These are the approved site plans. Be it further resolved that the Planning Board Chairman is authorized to sign the approved site plans, making them the final approved site plans upon confirmation of satisfactory resolution about any outstanding comments from the Planning Board's engineer, including providing an updated set of plans based on those comments, payment to the town of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees related to the application, coverage under the New York State DEC Speedies General Permit for Stormwater Discharges for Construction Activity and received any approvals from Dutchess County Department of Health for Phase Eight of the ARP. Be it further resolved that based upon the final approved site plans as signed by the chairman, any required building permits may be issued for Phase Eight. Be it further resolved that no certificate of occupancy may be issued for Phase Eight before the following are provided. Proof of any DEC HD permits required to operate the water supply onsite wastewater treatment systems to service Phase Eight. Proof of coverage under PCI Speedies General Permits GP 15-001 or issuance of an individual Speedies permit whichever DEC deems appropriate for the onsite wastewater treatment facility serving Phase Eight, and confirmation by the Planning Board Engineer that all improvements shown on the final approved site plans with respect to Phase Eight have been fully installed or completed. To obtain such confirmation, the applicant shall file with the Planning Board Engineer a complete set of certified ASBIL plans and the written certification of a New York State licensed engineer that the improvements have been installed or otherwise completed in conformance with the site plans with any deviations noted and explained. The ASBIL plan certification will serve as the basis for determination by the Planning Board Engineer that Phase Eight has been constructed in accordance with the final approved site plans as may be amended. Be it further resolved that in accordance with the zoning law, this approval shall expire if Troutback fails to commence construction to obtain the necessary building permits or fails to comply with the conditions of this approval within 18 months of its issuance. The Planning Board may grant a one-time six-month extension. This approval may be revoked by the Planning Board if Troutback violates the approval or its conditions, or engages in any construction or alteration not authorized by the approval. Any violation of this approval or its condition shall be deemed a violation of the zoning law and shall be subject to enforcement of action. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and mailed to the applicant within five days. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion?
Should move?
We'll call vote.
Robert Boyle, Chairperson?
Yes.
Nina Peake, Deputy Chairperson?
Yes.
Yeah? John Stephanopoulos is absent. James Walsh.
Aye.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vidieello. Motion passes and carries. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Need a motion to continue the public hearing with D.V.'s Windows Sign Application Route 343 of New York. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Any public comment? Anyone sign up? Okay.
Hi, good. Hi, my name is George Bistrans, and I live at 3498 Route 343. It's five houses up from the DaVinci Windows site. I want to reinforce what Nancy McKenzie said at the last Planning Board meeting about the safety issues at this section of Route 343. I don't own a car, and I travel by bicycle. In fact, I came by bike to this meeting. When I see a car or truck in my mirror, I pull off the road, often onto the grass. If I don't do this, the vehicle behind me usually pulls into the oncoming traffic, and there have been several close calls in the past. The road at the DaVinci site has a bend and a steep incline. Because of the bend, I can't use my mirror. Because of the steep incline, I have to brake. Twice I've lost traction when I pulled over into the grass. So I urge the board not to approve a sign that can distract a driver's attention at this bend in the road. While we're here to comment on the proposed sign, I wish we had been given an opportunity to comment on the commercial reuse and enlargement of the original residential building. Unfortunately, this project was not reviewed by the Planning Board, even though I think it should have been. The original building was too close to the road, but it was low enough not to overwhelm the neighborhood as a new building does. The new building rebuilt the side street, the street side of the foundation, and I think could have been moved back with the proper setback requirements. When I asked why the building wasn't setback, Mike Selkton told me that the setback wasn't required because it was being built on the original footprint. I think any reuse of a residential building to commercial use should be reviewed by this board, and the neighbors should be given a chance to weigh in. I think we need to make sure our zoning laws serve the people who live here. Now we're stuck with a highly visible commercial enterprise in a residential area at a dangerous turn and dip in the road. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment? Public hearing is now closed. Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Start this side first, okay?
If you may recall, at the last meeting, there was a number of issues raised by the public during the course of that public hearing.
Yes, it was.
And the board asked me to go out and take a look. And not only did they ask me to go out and take a look, they directed that I have a conversation with Megan Chamberlain, the Town Highway Superintendent, and also a conversation with Mike Segalkin. I did file a report with you, and, and I just want to hit the high points of that report, if I may. As I noted in our original memo, the project is located in the Hamlet Mixed Use Zoning District and the Primary Valley Bottom Aquifer. The property appears to fall immediately outside the Hamlet Exclusion Area and outside the 100-foot and 50-foot stream corridor overlay. A closer review on my part would suggest that the stream corridor overlay may actually reach into the southwest portion of the project site. No work is proposed there. Number two, the project as we understand it involved a renovation of existing single-family residential structure into a mixed-use structure with an upper-floor apartment and a lower-floor retail space for use as a window showroom and sales facility. No additions were proposed to the existing structure except for the installation of a detached ground-mounted sign. The site was otherwise to be used as is with the building renovated and restored. Mike Segalkin indicated that upon commencement of the work, it was determined that a portion of the structure was deteriorated to a point that it could not be renovated and needed to be removed. So they removed it down to basically the foundation. As a result, a portion of the structure was removed down to the foundation and fully reconstructed. The work was more extensive than we originally believed and conveyed to the board, but in Mike's opinion, it still constituted a renovation, and that's his call. The driveway was fully repaved. According to Mr. Segalkin, this was not part of the original scope of work, it was not part of his permit. It is unclear whether the driveway was paved to the same extent in the past, but clearly the current paved area was used at various times in the past as a parking area based on available historic aerial photographs. If you go to the county website, you can see photographs dating back a number of years, and where they, the parking is, it's always been parking. No Department of Health approval was required. There was no change, to be no change in bedroom count or system design was contemplated. The application indicates the system was to remain as is. No details are available, and Mike did reiterate that the border health won't get involved if there's no changes contemplated. At the time of the visit, the property corners were staked and clearly labeled. It is clear that the debris and a pile of brush or trees had been placed on the adjoining property. If you remember, one of the...
Yes.
People said, "Somebody pushed a bunch of stuff." All such material needs to be removed and the property restored to its predisturbance condition. It doesn't appear that there was an effort to grade or work on the adjacent property. It simply appears as though they just kind of pushed and threw everything over the line, so it can be easily cleaned up. Dutchess County Parcel Access indicates that there are no freshwater wetlands, both federal or state, on the, that there are, excuse me, freshwater wetlands, both federal and state on the adjacent parcel to the west and across Route 343. There are no wetlands indicated on the subject parcel. It appears that portions of this parcel fall within the 100-foot adjacent area to the state-regulated wetlands. It is not clear whether a permit for, for the work performed was or is required. The building was a renovation, and the paving seems to be, to have been in large part a restoration of what previously existed. Such activities under DEC are considered exempt and do not typically require a permit. The subject, the project site falls in a check zone for threatened and endangered species, the timber rattler and the bog turtle. Given the developed nature of the site and the relative lack of site disturbance associated with the proposal, an impact to this species is considered unlikely. The project appears to be a Type II action under SEACER, as it involves the construction or expansion of a primary non-residential structure involving less than 4,000 square gross floor area and not involving a change in use or use variance, and is consistent with local land use controls. As a Type II action, no environmental view would have been required in any event. And the last one was, we reviewed the line of sight issues raised concerning the Sheffield Road Route 343 intersection. We attached to the copy I sent around pictures that indicate that the line of sight would not be impacted by the proposed sign. The sign would not likely be seen from the intersection. In the photos, you can barely see the Planning Board Notice Sign, which is white and slightly smaller, close to the ground, and set farther out toward the road. We further discussed the intersection and line of sight issues with Highway Superintendent Chamberlain. She is aware of some accidents at this location, but the ones that she is familiar with relate more to Route 343 geometry and driver issues rather than sightlines. There's been a couple rollovers where people have inadvertently hit the bank that's right after this site. She has examined sightline issues in the past. In her estimation, they typically revolve around vegetative growth in a leaf-on condition along Route 343, which is a state highway, which is not her concern. So, and I would suggest you take a look at the pictures, because what I did purposely when I went out there, I parked my vehicle, which is a red SUV, where the sign would be located. And if you look at the photographs, you can barely see my vehicle, and I took, but when you walk across the street and take a photograph from across the street, you can clearly see things. So, I don't believe that a sign at this location is going to have any impact on the lines of sight and traffic.
So, the, the sign will be about 350 feet from the intersection of Sheffield Road and 343?
Roughly, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's quite a ways down.
Got it. And how large of a sign are we looking at?
It's, it's an open sign, and I think it's basically two by six, the main portion of it, and then with the gingerbread around it, it might extend slightly more, but it's kind of like an open metallic structure, but the actual sign board is roughly two by six.
And it complies with the...
It complies with zoning. There is an issue of lighting that was discussed, and the applicant has committed to providing lighting which is consistent with the town code. We probably should have a record copy of a final sign design with the lighting shown and the nature and type of the lighting defined.
I think it would be good.
Boyle, you have anything?
No, we drafted a resolution if the board would like. We have added a condition related to the removal of the debris on the neighboring property. We also had a condition that before a sign permit could be issued, that the Planning Board Engineer would have to sign off on a note added to the sign details that would require compliance with the zoning law with respect to illumination.
The only question I have, it's all good with the state highway?
There is no change, and Megan has no knowledge of any issues with state highway in that vicinity, sir.
Okay.
So we don't have, sorry, we don't have a current site plan that has the proposed lighting on it?
We have, the last site plan we have simply has a note on there which specifies, and I have a copy of it here, on the sign detail. Give me a minute. It says, "Sign to be externally lit from above or below to be determined," but it does not, it does not show the lighting, nor does it, it just has the note. So it probably should be updated to show the lighting and a little detail added so as we know what type is expected to be there.
John, do you have a sense, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you have a sense of where the location of the sign actually would be so that the board could...
Yeah, the sign is actually dimensioned and shown. It's six foot back from the front property line, which would probably put it about 18 foot off the white line, and it's about six or so feet from the westerly property line. So it's kind of in the property. If you looked at the photographs that I sent, roughly where the front windshield of my truck, my SUV, as you can see from across the street, is where the sign would be. And that is shown on the site plan.
And by the white line, you reference the white line. You mean the property line, not the center line of the road?
The white line is the outside line of the road, not the center line. 343 has a white line painted on the outer edge of the drive lane, so that's typically where things are measured from.
I think, I mean, from my, we asked for, back on December 13th, the last time when we had the public hearing, for the revised site plan showing the lights, where they were going to be, how bright they were going to be, where they were going to be located, but it seems like we haven't gotten that yet. It seems, given that there's all these other things that probably should have happened with this that didn't, it seems premature to approve the site plan if we actually haven't seen the final site plan.
That's entirely up to the board. I have no compelling sentiment either direction.
Dean's opinion, anyone else got an opinion on this? What do you guys want to do?
I mean, just knowing where it is, across from the stone yard, how far in that sign is, assuming we ultimately get the detail on the light, I mean, from my opinion, we're making it a little bit difficult for a company that is really now just about the sign, I think. Somebody wants to open a business in our town, and we're quibbling about, we know what the sign is, we're just talking about whether, I presume, we require downlighting and uplighting on the sign.
That is correct, sir.
Maybe that's just the note, is that they'll submit the lighting plan, and it will be downlighting. Just my opinion.
Albert? John?
Yeah, I think if we submit that, what we would require demand, and it complies with the zoning code, then that should be sufficient, and we mandate that that happens that way.
Can we vote on the resolution with a motion, the resolution, provided is contingent upon the receipt of the amended lighting plan? Something like that?
Exactly what I was going to ask, but I'd like to just also talk about the placing of the sign and the road itself. I drive it quite often, going back and forth here in Connecticut, and I, talking to John, I don't see any problem with where the sign will be situated and the road. The problem is the road, unfortunately. As we know, DOT doesn't care a lot about our roads. It's not, I believe, my personal opinion is that it is not the sign that would be any problem, but I agree with everyone with the lighting, it should be added in. Thank you.
The only thing I want to correct, Mr. Chairman, Judy just advised me, she has a, she has a more recent submission from the applicant that I did not have, and the actual note reads, "Sign to be externally lit from above." So they took the either or out, so we're 90% there. We probably, it would probably be more convenient, and it's more typical to see how the light, the light is mounted to the sign and how it shines. So, but, we're 90% there with the note being correct, and I stand corrected. My apologies, I didn't get that. And I think, to the point that has been raised, Paul kind of put that in there and said, "You can't get your permit, you can't pass GO until you satisfy our requirements." So I think we've kind of got it covered, but I defer to the board.
And you may, I mean, if you wanted to add anything, you could talk about also submitting a detail that relates to the location as described to the board in this public meeting.
Yeah, that was submitted, the location.
So the location's...
Yeah, that was part of the original submission.
So, that's up to...
And given the information that we have, I'd like to move ahead and grant the site plan approval.
So, that all being said, read the resolution.
Now therefore be it resolved that based on the application made pursuant to the zoning law and New York State Town Law, the Planning Board hereby grants site plan review approval of the project based on following plans that have been submitted to the board, drawing M1, which is plan view, drawing M2, which is elevations and details, drawing M3, which is the sign details, and drawing M1A, which I'm not sure what that is, but it's part of the set. Be it further resolved that no sign permit shall be issued for the project until a revised drawing M3 details has been approved by the Planning Board's engineer that includes a date for revision and modifies the note specifying that the sign will only be externally lit to... lit to further provide that it will only be lit from above, will be downward facing, and will otherwise comply with the standards for elimination in the zoning law. Be it further resolved that the planning board chairman is authorized to sign the approved site plan certifying it as the final approval, the final approved site plan upon receipt of the following items. Confirmation from the code officer that any and all debris and brush placed by DaVinci on the adjoining property have been removed, and that the affected area has been restored to its pre-disturbance condition. Confirmation from the code officer that a final sign permit has been issued, and confirmation payment to the town of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and mailed to the applicant within five days of the resolution. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
So just a question, the date that's in here, the December 10th, drawing Judy, that's the one that you just referenced and handed to John that says just from above, not above and below?
I actually think it says October.
Unfortunately, the way this has been submitted, this one does have a revision date, and it's identified as 12/13/24. So it's after that date. I did not get this one.
And I haven't seen that one either. I think that's part of the conversation.
So do you want to just change, what if we just change the date in the resolution to reflect that it's December 13?
That's fine.
It's a good idea.
Good idea. It's 12/13/2024.
Yep.
Nina, motion to accept the resolutions?
Will you?
Okay. Vote, vote, you lead.
I'll handle that. Robert Boyle's chairperson?
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos.
Yes.
James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vidello.
Yes.
Motion carried and passed. Thank you all.
Okay. Into our regular meeting, Cascade Creek subdivision project in River Valley.
Hello again, everyone. Good to see you all. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Here tonight, this is pretty simple on our part. We're just here to process the planning board's comments that we received over the weekend. So to give the board a recap, the Cascade Creek subdivision project is a 28-lot residential subdivision designed to support workforce housing. As we discussed in our documentations and on our plat set, the subdivision is designed for four-bedroom houses, uniform, that pretty much fit the lot as is, as is designed. The parcel is 24 acres within the suburban residential zoning district. The parcel will contain two new entrances, or the project will contain two new entrances, one along Cascade Road and the other along New York State Route 22. Being that this is a conservation subdivision, 50% minimum of the total parcel will have to be preserved under Armenia subdivision law. We are also providing common sewer and common water supply systems for the individual lots. So this allows us to actually reduce the minimum acreage from the suburban residential one-acre requirement to quarter, or 8,000 square foot lots. We're actually providing around between a quarter of, or a quarter of an acre to half-acre lots for the full project. So again, upping the size of those lots so they're not as small. And again, just to reiterate, today, we're just here to discuss the planning board consultant comments that we received over the weekend, and to discuss any other comments that the board may have in reviewing this application, because it's been over a month. So any feedback the board would provide us, we'll include in our next resubmission where we'll be bolstering the conservation analysis document. So happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I did issue a memo dated January 2nd, 2025, and basically, it was basically a two-part memo, because if you recall, at the December 10th, I had issued a draft memo for your consideration of some talking points. With this second memo, it incorporates the first, and it also, I offer some comments with respect to the conservation analysis that was submitted. In our estimation, the analysis generally identifies and addresses the items found in the required section. It provides and identifies forested areas in general, but it does not identify any individual trees 18 inches in diameter. It's not a fatal flaw, but that is a requirement of your code. The planning board may also identify other lands which quote exhibit present or future potential recreation, historic, ecological, agricultural, water resource, scenic, or other natural resource value. For example, the analysis indicates that the property has been continuously used for agriculture, row crop, since before 1936. The planning board may want to include and/or consider such continuous use as establishing a conservation value worthy of preservation. The information does not, submitted does not sufficiently describe the importance and current potential conservation value of the lands identified. The magnitude of the importance and the possible conservation value of the identified resources needs to be expanded. If you look at the recent, the analysis section and the percentage of certain items, it is apparent that the largest impacts are deprived farmland, soils, agriculture, and stream corridor overlay. We find that a more detailed expansion of these factors and how the proposed design preserves these items as resources should be provided. And the conclusion as presented suggests that the proposed plan quote provides a compact, efficient layout which maximizes the availability of new workforce housing, minimizes overall site disturbance, and protects the conservation lands identified in the report from future development, close quotes. It's my belief this conclusion may be somewhat premature, and that the analysis submitted does not seem to fully, yet fully establish the lands of conservation value and most, and what are most important to preserve. Having said that, there's also a number of technical items that follow up in the second half of the item, the memo, the most significant of which, Peter, if you may recall, is the discrepancy in acreage. You were going to investigate that and make a report to us, so we're still looking for that.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the certified survey from the surveyor, so we'll submit that as soon as we get it.
Okay. And there are other issues, but I think the most important thing first, before we get to design, and I'm sure Paul will speak about this, is getting the conservation analysis correct and identifying the lands to be preserved.
And that really was the focus of the comments that I provided to the board. As much process as anything else, and just because there's sort of natural inclination, both on part of the applicant and the board, to look at the subdivision design and say, oh, this is what we're looking at. You're not looking at the subdivision design right now. You're looking at the land itself, the entirety of the land. And that what they're supposed to be doing in the conservation analysis is identifying the resources based on the zoning law that they suggest have conservation value. Your job is to say, and John kind of alluded to it, you've given me enough information so I know which lands have, you know, what the resources are, I know what the most, where the conservation value they're suggesting is. And then of those lands, you're supposed to say, these are the lands that have the most conservation value and should be preserved. And then their job is then to design their subdivision around that. Okay? And so, you know, it's hard because, you know, you naturally want to jump right to the, oh my gosh, you know, where it is. But, you know, so you have the different resources that have been identified, and in the email that I provided, I tried to kind of pick out some that, you know, seem to me like, you know, you may want to think more about. There is a potential wildlife corridor, there's lands up here that are forested, lands down here that are forested, and along that stream, which is within the stream corridor overlay district, you know, that may be something that you want to have them look at more in terms of the wildlife impact. Think about the reasons for the stream corridor overlay district, and whether having the lots extend within the setbacks is something that, you know, is something you want to protect, or, you know, that it's okay that maybe that happens. You have, as John pointed out, these are cultivated agricultural fields. I was really impressed when I looked at the agricultural maps, I mean, at the Google, you know, just aerial view, you know, these have been cultivated fields. Is that, is it okay that they're all going to be taken up with a subdivision? Is there some further opportunity, is there more information you want to know about the status of agriculture on those lands and the potential that they may continue to be cultivated but for a subdivision? So those are the sort of things, you know, in terms of gathering information about the resources that have been identified, so that you feel comfortable saying, yes, these are the ones we want to preserve. And then the applicant, perhaps you end up with the same, you know, design, but perhaps they have to move it around if they want to continue to have the subdivision. But it's really a preliminary exercise that will lead to a defined sketch plan upon which you'll do not only your seeker review, but also your subdivision review. So that's really the gist of my comments for the board to consider.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, and I'm, maybe I should know this, but maybe I haven't been on the board long enough to understand this exactly. At what point do we understand what that wildlife is that's being affected? Are we asking the applicant to go get the third-party expertise to understand what that wildlife is and what the impact on it is? That stream that runs through there that I know there are, I think, just speaking from general knowledge, there's concerns about how to, is it the applicant we're asking to go get expertise and to borrow it?
That's correct. They, for example, for the conservation analysis, they did have a biologist go out and look at the potential for endangered species on the site. But the zoning law talks about whether there are wildlife corridors. And so that same biologist could do, could provide a memo. He may not have to do a full-on habitat assessment, but he could provide a memo that sort of describes the nature of the potential habitat along that corridor, the potential for connections to other forested areas. But that would be something they would do.
And we take what is presented by the applicant's biologist is our, we take it as fact?
You don't have to. You could always, if you wanted to go deeper...
What's that?
If you wanted to go deeper, the board could hire its own biologist at the applicant's expense to either review the work of the biologist or to do their own study.
And we've done that in the past, had our own biologist come in and do a review on properties. My concern is that I'm not sure if that's a registered trout stream, or there's been also, I used to, sorry, I have a lot of history in this town. We used to catch spotted salamanders there as well. And I don't know what the biological term for those spotted salamanders are, but I used to catch trout right in that stream. So I don't know if that's still vibrant with trout, based on some of the developments along Cascade Road anymore, but, you know, it's always been a bucolic kind of road, and the neighbors have been very, very supportive of each other, so.
I have a couple of comments, questions, concerns, and thank you for that explanation. It's hard to ignore the plot plan of where your... So the only thing I'll say about that is where you've indicated the houses is exactly where the corn has always been planted up to this year. Starts, goes along the stream, the creek, curves around in front of Fresh Town. So this year is the first year it has not been planted, and it's pretty good cover when you drive up Cascade Road or you're driving along Fresh 22. So it seemed to work. I'd never noticed it being further in the northeast corner of the property. A lot of mine has to do with water quality, and some of it is downstream. The monit, there was a, an analysis done of the creek, lead by Housatonic people, Housatonic people, and here's some of what they found. At their town hall monitoring site, which is 2,600 feet from the site, the E coli levels were 4,100. The recommended US standard, environmental standard is for, the EPA standard is 410. So, you know, do the math. It's not starting up at town hall, it's starting up there. I'm concerned that more runoff, more hazardous, I really want to know what your waste treatment's going to be. There's also some suffocate level figures I could give you from the same report, and the report is dated 5/28 and was presented to the town board from the survey in the hamlet of Armenia prepared by the Housatonic Valley Association. So that's where this came from, and you can find it there. Stormwater runoff. Right now, in the northwest corner of plot, heavy rain, all the houses, the properties on Cascade Road flood out for runoff, some of the runoff coming off of that property. You're going to have to figure out how to deal with that. There's about three houses that get pretty well inundated. And then, look at, about 700 feet downstream from the property with the, on the USGS survey, topographic survey, from the northeast corner of the property to the southwest corner, you lose about 20 feet, roughly.
Plus or minus, yep.
That's all going to run down towards that corner. You put in some, you pave some of that, it's going to run down towards that corner. And the Fresh Town Plaza from the creek floods out in heavy, heavy rain. This year, they had to raise the parking lot because it was flooding. That flooding didn't come from the east, the southeast, it came from the culvert that comes off of Cascade Creek. So if you're going to be limiting the absorption of the site, you're only going to put more water that's going to flood downstream. The property next to the liquor store, their chickens are practically on the road because they're getting away from the water. The contamination of all the water downstream, the town hall site is the, so far, the migratory extent of the bog turtle. That came from the Armenia Turtle Sanctuary people, one of them's a vet, they've been rescuing bog turtles for a while, and they said that they've noticed a slight migratory path north from where, you know, come through the Cumberland wetland area and whatnot. Bringing them closer to the Cascade Creek is only going to endanger them further and stress the creek further. In your EIA, your environmental assessment, you noted that there was no way you're going to disturb sediments. I don't know how you're going to build a bridge across the creek without that. So I just need to know more. What are you doing with runoff? How are you going to protect the creek?
Yep.
And that sort of thing.
And just to comment, right now, because this is the conservation analysis side of things, we haven't designed all of this out, but as part of preliminary and final subdivision review, we're going, we're required by New York State law to develop a full stormwater pollution prevention plan for the proper management and treatment of stormwater generated by proposed development. So it's not like this is going to flood it in unmitigated or untreated. I just wanted everyone to under- I just wanted everyone to understand that, that this is just the beginning part to identify the conservation side of things. And then as we move forward, we will be developing the thick book of stormwater pollution prevention plans, so.
Right. I just want you to be aware of, which it's not my concerns, only I'm sure all the neighbors in that area share the same concerns.
Understood.
Ken, 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 Ken. Get him anything else?
Not this time.
All right.
See where you're standing at the top right now, William. You have to come backwards, so.
Very cool. Yeah, we'll take everything into consideration and make a more robust conservation analysis submission and we'll, we'll be back when we're back.
Thank you.
Kenley. You mind?
Want to distribute this or, let me just go over it one time.
What's that?
They want to give my notes to the board. I'd like to just, just review it.
Looks fine.
If I could, and then we could forward it to them.
Yeah, looks fine.
And correct one or two things.
Hey, Ken, would it be possible for you to forward that stuff to us as well?
That's up, that's up to them.
Okay, perfect.
I just have to make sure a hundred percent that, yeah.
No, understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's not our game, man, is it, you know?
Awesome.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Take care.
Okay. Other matters is President Patrick O'Leary. You hear somewhere, he's like, look at that, like magic. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, Patrick. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mr. Chairman, and board members and staff as well. Nice to see you all again. We asked for some time tonight because over the course of the summer, I introduced the new Discovery team and into the fall. And there were a couple of requests from board members regarding that introduction, one of which was to provide an organization chart on how Silo Ridge is organized and where the entities are and who are in those respective entities. And then you also had asked us for a status update at some level on what the as-built condition is at Silo Ridge. There's 245 units proposed. I couldn't tell you the exact number that had been built. And so what we did over the past four months is went through all the plans over there and tried to compare the plans to the MDP and members of Discovery will speak to it tonight. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may approach, I have some handouts for you.
Sure.
If there's any revisions or anything that need to be done to them, we will make the revisions and then provide the secretary with digital copies of these for future reference for you. And if I may approach to hand these out and introduce Sal Share from Discovery, who's going to go over the org chart.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What about the second wife in here? Oh, no.
Hey, hey.
I said, what about the second wife?
Thank you, Patrick, for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and.
Thank you for coming.
For inviting us and thank you all for listening to this. I know last time I was here, I introduced myself, Saul Scherl. I'm the president, project president here at Silo as well as some other projects for Discovery. I really just wanted to walk you through our org chart that you had asked about. So if you see up at the top, I'm there at the top reporting directly into our founder and CEO on the left-hand corner, Mike Meldman. He's the owner of the company as well as our corporate team, which is based out of Scottsdale and Los Angeles unfortunately right now. And there are some other project presidents as well. What we did here is we tried to show you the changes that have been made. So if you look at everything on the right that's in green, that's new hires that we brought here since we've transitioned from Stoneleaf over to Discovery on the development side. So you'll see me there. Below that is Lakeisha Perez, who we brought in. She's worked with me before, but she's our new human resource director for Silo Ridge. And then over to the right, you see Mike Clark, who's running our development, came from the Yellowstone Club. The team below that, he's hired Director of Construction, who recently joined us, Director of Architecture, and all the managers and support. I think there's four or five of them that we've hired since. And we're out looking for an interior design manager as we speak. Zach Winnick, who's here with us tonight, he's our SVP of Strategic Operations and Development, working with both the operations team and the development team. And Richard Frick, who's our new CFO, that joins us from New York City, moved up here to Armenia and is here full-time now overseeing all the accounting. Dan O'Callahan, our Director of Sales, and Egon, they run our sales. Dan's been here since the beginning and work, we work closely with him. The middle section is all of our operational team. So you see Michael Ryan, who was here last time. Unfortunately, he couldn't come tonight. He's our general manager. And below it, we divide between basically what we call our, you know, traditional operations team and then our experiential team, which is our outdoor vibe, grounds, agronomy, F and B, et cetera, et cetera. So it's pretty spelled out there. In the lower left, you'll see we have a Director of Marketing and Communications. Both of them are located elsewhere. They work on several projects, Gina and Kim. And then all the way to the left, we just wanted to share with you how we've divided up the HOA boards, both the Silo Ridge HOA board. This has all been changed over the last, you know, three months since we were here. Our condo boards as well as our Silo Ridge Review Committee members that, you know, do our architectural review and things like that. So that's generally the summary. And like I said, the people with asterisks next to them are the new members that recently have joined us as part of the Silo Ridge team. So we are growing quickly up here this summer. We're actually starting this last week with our hires for the summer and with, you know, all the, the sales we've had and the construction we have, it's, it's growing fairly quickly. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them before I introduce Mike.
Fascinating for me as a resident to see this. This is on my refrigerator. I, I just want to make sure I understand something. So there is, there are no prior ownership, the Torres family, there is none of their participation in the Silo Ridge at this point.
Correct.
And there is no, they're just Keen Stud, or we don't even know what they are. They're just not part of Silo.
Well, they're, they're still, they're still a partner in Silo Ridge, but they're not involved in the development, operations, or management of Silo Ridge. So basically, they're there, but they have a limited role. They went from a more participating role to a limited role. They're limited partners.
So they're non-operating partners?
They're non-operating partners on the operations side or the development side. That being said, as you all know, they do have a development and construction team that was Stoneleaf that's still in business. And they have the right to, you know, bid for single-family homes, construction if someone wants, the same way Discovery has bought their construction team here. You know, Mike is, you know, bidding against a few projects with Stoneleaf and other contractors. So similar to other contractors, they have the way, but no, not, not any, and as far as, as far as King Stud, yeah, that's their ownership. We have nothing to do with King Stud. We have no ownership. We do rent some land, some, some storage and land from them, but that's it.
I thank you for providing this.
Yes.
Not sure it's any clearer, but thank you.
Okay.
So when an issue comes before the, the board here.
Yeah.
From Silo, is that something generally that the HOA or individual HOAs approve so that we have a sense this is what the community wants? Do they have, does a community have input? Or I'm trying to decide, how does the HOA intersect with something that might come here?
So when you say something like, for example, these new buildings that are pending or that we might file, you mean just new construction like that? As far as the site plan is mapped out, how it's going to be developed, they don't get involved in, you know, the layout of the units or anything like that, but they are aware of how the site is developed, but not particularly involved in, you know, the condos that have been formed, those condo boards, those are finished projects. So they don't really get involved day-to-day.
Well, in specific, and this was before I was a member of the board, but I came to a couple of meetings, there was one lot adjustment or a combination of two lots to make a 30,000 or 27,000 square foot lot and put on a 15,000 or 12,000 square foot residence. Is that something that, and I vaguely remember, this could be just, could be completely wrong, but it's, well, do the residents approve of that sort of thing? Does the HOA get involved or it's just none of their business and?
Yeah, so I would say twofold.
You see what I'm trying to do is say, where does the community have input to their community?
So twofold. First of all, we do, as you know, we do annual meetings and regular meetings updating what's going on on the development side. But some people have actually put restrictions on their lots, like there are people that have said they don't want something next. Generally, we don't permit that. But what we do allow is them to come to the meetings the same way any neighborhood would come and, and complain about combining two lots or the like. But one of the things I, I'm just gonna, you know, one of the things I think that the company has been phenomenally successful on, maybe not as much here, but hoping to, to win that over, is we've been phenomenally successful on listening to our members. And if you go and talk to members around the world, you know, Mike, who runs the company, is reluctant to just, you know, go do whatever he wants next door to, you know, someone that just spent a lot of money for a house. So we don't directly go out to them and, and get their opinion on that kind of stuff. But I will tell you that they're in the loop and to the extent that they want to make their voice known, the members are not shy about letting us know how they feel about certain things. I'll give you a perfect example, which is you were, you were thoughtful enough to approve this temporary gym. We went to all the members. There are members that live across the street. We told them what we were doing and we made assurances to them that, you know, that structure, A, won't be there forever because you don't want it there forever either. But we made assurances to them that that's not the permanent home. People don't want, you know, that structure right across from, you know, their homes where they've spent a lot of money and, and commitment to. So we, we do listen to them and we try to accommodate as much we can.
Okay.
And we welcome them to come here, you know, and to voice their opinions as well, support and, and likewise, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the, what's the relationship between, how did, on this org chart, what, where does the Silo Ridge Community Foundation, the Armenia WSAIC Community Organization, and Stoneleaf and Siland, how do they intersect with the rest of this organization?
So the foundations, just so you know, obviously, on the Silo Ridge Foundation is a separate foundation by Silo Ridge where we try to get our members to participate and support local events, charities, things like that. It then, all the money that the Silo Ridge Foundation raises goes to the Armenia Foundation. I think right now that's actually being revisited. Zach can speak to it for a second. We're trying to combine the two from an overhead and a cost perspective and a simplicity. Our only, just, you know, our, our concern is we want to make sure that the Silo Ridge members remain committed to supporting it in a way that's meaningful without combining the two and it getting wrapped up and then, then not, you know, sort of feeling like that's just a larger foundation that they don't need to be involved with. So we've been trying to get more and more involved and more and more supportive. This summer after the horse show, I think we raised, you know, significant amount of money the Silo Ridge Foundation for. We did a fundraiser there and I think we're getting ready to do on this winter as well to keep the foundations going. On Siland, I think our plan is at the next meeting when we come back to present to you what's that structure. We're actually finalizing that now because of the whole restructuring that we did. It was unfortunately left out of that and it's being reworked as part of it. And then, what was the third?
Stoneleaf.
Stoneleaf is owned 100% by Juan and Pedro and they are, that's who Stoneleaf is. Discovery has no ownership or anything to do with Stoneleaf Construction.
So everybody is, so nobody on the, this organization chart has anything to do with Stoneleaf?
Correct. Correct. No, other than, if you think of it this way, at the top where the ownership is, Stoneleaf is a partner and the ownership's still.
Isn't the Armenia WSAIC, what is?
Armenia WSAIC, I mean, I'll speak to this because I'm on the board of it.
Yeah.
As is John. I mean, in my experience, they're really, there are, Michael Ryan is on that board. But in its day-to-day, you don't really feel an overlap.
Okay, because.
With Discovery per se.
Because Silo Ridge funds part of it, donates part, some money to it.
Well, you just said Silo Ridge funds all of it.
Why don't we fund, we fund all of our money that Silo Ridge raises. All the money we raise, I believe, Zach, go.
The money that we raised previously goes to that Armenia WSAIC.
Correct. All of our money.
Or had the direction of them, they were going to fund.
So just to be clear, the two were originally set up so that Silo Ridge Community Foundation would exclusively raise money from members at Silo Ridge. And the only thing it could do was give that money to the Armenia WSAIC Community Foundation. The thought, the thought process at the time was that that board and that structure, since you were raising exclusively from Silo Ridge members, would be comprised of professionals from Silo Ridge and members at Silo Ridge. But the Armenia WSAIC Community Foundation would have a broader board and participation because it was now dispersing the money basically. It probably ended up being too clumsier structure and now we're trying to collapse it. Also, Juan and Pedro were both participants in both of those foundations. Now that they're not really, my understanding is we're looking at their, I think.
They've resigned.
They both resigned.
They've resigned.
They both resigned.
Yes.
And so we're going to collapse them and just make it a community foundation that can raise from in and out of the membership because it didn't really serve any great purpose to.
And the other thing that it helps us is the Discovery, Discovery has a foundation as well. But now if we make it simpler, Discovery will also commit dollars to the foundation as well besides our members. So it's going to open up a lot more opportunities of, of support across the board. Unfortunately, when Juan and Pedro are running it, it didn't allow for Discovery Foundation to support the foundation.
Thank you.
I am sure.
Yeah, of course, sorry.
Do you see, is the group going to grow or how do you?
Our group?
Yeah, your, the new group, is it going to continue to grow or is it?
Yeah, I think, you know, on the operational side, we're growing. I, you know, now having a gym, for example, I was told today we needed a Director of Fitness and Well-being or something like that, that we didn't have budgeted for this year. So as we build out more and finish the project, I think it will grow on the operations side. I can promise you on the development side, it will grow. You know, we're, we're looking quick, you know, we're looking, we've been hiring, not easy to hire people anywhere, so we've been trying to find the right people. We've got a great team so far, but the development team will also grow as well, I think, as, as, as a, more and more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will take a few minutes and walk you guys through the I chart.
Okay.
So. This was a, basically a chart that we tried to simplify as much as we could to give you
guys a good, broad understanding of how Silo Ridge is tracking to the original approved master development plan. And so the real questions that are pertinent related to that are really building footprint or ground area coverage for all buildings in the project and then bedroom counts. Those are your primary criteria for the approval of the master development plan. And so if you guys take a look at this chart, in the very upper left-hand corner of this, this box that you see here with the blue headings that says revised site plan includes all approved site plan amendments through 2022. To give you all of the criteria and everything that has been approved all the way through 2022. To the right of that, in the green heading where it says MDP, this is the criteria from the original final approved master development plan from 2015. So as it relates, and then over to the right of that is a delta comparing those two numbers together to show basically where we sit in just looking at the current approved plan versus the 2015 approved plan and what's already been processed in site plan approvals because there have been a few. So if we go to, and first of all, any questions related to that information?
Why only through 2022?
Because we haven't had anything else approved since between 2022 and now, the only thing that's been submitted is the current site plan that you guys are reviewing.
Okay. As a lot, not the two lot mergers, that doesn't factor into this?
That is correct. They, they just become one lot. The lots that dropped out of subdivisions just became additional density units for the project overall, but didn't really make a difference. It actually helps on the ground floor coverage or ground floor area coverage because the ratios get much better, but ultimately it didn't really impact much related to those.
Okay.
So on the next tier down from this, we have a built-to-date. This is what's actually been built at Silo Ridge at this point in time. It's 118 total units. This includes everything that's basically been built to date. With that, there's a total of 400. everything that's basically been built to date, with that, there's a total 468 bedrooms existing, a total of 325,000 square feet of building footprint, in other words, if you were to just take the outline of every building and look at it as it lays out on the ground, that's the total square footage of what that looks like, and then 547,000 gross square feet, as it relates to the 2015 master development plan approvals, and this is where it gets kind of complicated to walk through because things changed uses over time, for example, you eliminated single-family homes and added condos and different things through the different approvals that have occurred over time, and so, the simplest way to look at this is to go back to the original master development plan approval from 2015 and compare what have we really built in what subdivisions, because you have to apply a ratio of, of what each of those are in real numbers to today's comparable, and so, with that all being said, you can see kind of where everything lays out, now, I, I'm sure you guys are gonna point this out as ironic, but we built basically 468 bedrooms, there's a total planned based on using that criteria of 468 bedrooms, so it's a net variance of zero at this point in time, the, kind of moving over to the delta and taking a look at this, from a, a total, where we are to date, we're 9,714 square feet over in terms of buildings footprint, and a total of 131,000 gross square feet based on homes being built bigger, and, and what that really means is there's things like in-law suites that were added to homes that were not planned for previously, things like that, that really added to that gross square footage number as each of those have been approved.
It's mostly second floor.
That is correct, yep, that's, that's all second floors, easiest way to say it because we know we only have a 9,714 square foot variance, and so, with all that being said, I also put the current pending site plan that you guys are in the process of reviewing, the information from that related to this, because it's important for us to understand that as we talk about the site plan too and give full transparency associated with that, and so, that comes down to this next section down, and this only entertains those buildings D and E that are changing from townhomes to condos and the associated unit counts and square footage related to those and what that would do to our totals as if they were approved, and so, you guys can understand what that is and look at the impact, what you'll see is that the results are actually improving as we change the town, the townhomes that were approved in the master development plan were very large and very spread out, and we're doing much smaller condos, less impactful, and that kind of gets you to reduced overall overages from the master development plan, the other thing we're currently doing, which we've already told the board, is reevaluating our entire master plan at Silo Ridge, and we have the intention of coming in in the not-too-distant future and presenting an entire master plan related to those thoughts, and, and it's a lot to think through, but it's, it's being more thoughtful about how to develop and really finish out the overall community and making sure it's something the members want and they're going to really enjoy for the long term, it's making sure we're thoughtful about the architecture, the impact on the community, all of the different things that, that are really important to both the planning board and us for the success of Silo Ridge, and so, with all that being said, I'm happy to come in separately too and sit down with anyone that really wants to go through in detail and understand this, took a long time to pull all this data together because honestly, a lot of the, the single-family homes were owners that just bought a lot from us and took off and, and ran with it and built something, and so, we had to go and grab all that data and pull it all together into one place and look at it, and so, this is kind of the culmination of all of that and kind of gives you guys a good idea of where we are, the real answer I would say is we're definitely over on gross square footage, which I think anyone here would have assumed coming into this, but the, the key measurements that we look at, at ground floor coverage or impervious area and bedroom counts, we're almost right on the mark, which is really good news.
If I could just add one thing, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, we are looking at the overall site plan coming in again, but I don't want there to be like, you know, we're not coming in with 300 units or looking to increase, we're, we're just coming in to shift things around, but understand there'll be a site plan amendment this time, so I don't want you thinking like, what's coming down the road, you know, some big change, we're, we're really, we're trying to stick as consistently as we can to the original site plan amendment, just really moving density around and, and, and trying to stay within the overall density as well.
Yep, absolutely.
I want to thank you both for a very in-depth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Explanation, thank you.
No problem, any questions?
If I may, just, just for the board's edification, I, I went through a sing, a similar exercise for the Town Board and the Housing Board, and my numbers come out very similar to these, I have to, now that I have a hard copy, I have to look at them in more detail, but I think we arrived at the same thing and I, I share your pain because I had to go through every approved plan line by line to see what was in and what was out and what wasn't, but I think one of the things that you gotta bear in mind is, is, is they hinge on gross square footage and, and first floor, there was an acknowledgement in the original documents that everything was based on an estimate, so, it is not unanticipated that they would be over/under, but the things that relate to that, for instance, stormwater management, we did make some concessions, the town did, in the designs and the way it gets implemented, so, for instance, if you take, and Rich Rennie is probably the world's expert at this, if you take the individual lots, they have certain green infrastructure requirements and targets that they must hit to keep the stormwater management under control, and they, even though some of the footprints have varied, the, the metric of stormwater management, at the end of the day, we're probably better off than what the original plans called for because they have implemented many of these measures, whether they be rain gardens, whether they be green infrastructure, and Rich has always been one for belt and suspenders, he's also added a lot of infiltration galleys, so, overall, I'm, I'm less concerned about square footage and, and the major driving metric has always been bedrooms, and they're, you're damn near right on bedroom-wise.
Yep.
One of the, one of the things that we had talked about last, when you guys were here last time around, and I think this would probably come with your new site plan application, was sort of reviewing these numbers, bedroom counts in the context of the seeker findings and the impacts, or the, the demand for water was based on bedrooms and traffic, there was a certain amount of traffic that was assumed to be generated by the development, and there was a checkpoint, right, like, had a certain amount of units or CVOs issues and, and needing to go back and to sort of verify the assumptions that were made for the financial contributions and the different kinds of impacts associated with the project, and I presume you're gonna do that as part of the new revised site plan applications, just the gut check of like, all right, what did we think was gonna happen, what actually happened, and what is the difference there, and do we need to apply additional mitigation in order to offset those impacts?
For sure, I'd also tell you, just based on what I know, just personal frame of reference, we'll find that those numbers are way down just based on usage, there's a lot of vacant, vacant homes sitting at Silo Ridge right now as we speak that aren't gonna, those numbers just aren't gonna come.
Do you have any questions or concerns?
So, this is the as-built at, from Stone Leaf, right?
This is as-built from everything, so, everything is.
All this is Stone Leaf, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So, you're at the halfway point essentially?
Yep.
Yeah, related to that, and it's probably something you guys have already done most of, now that you have new management and you're gonna be coming in sort of moving things around and kind of moving to the next stage, it's been suggested that, you know, just making sure that in terms of compliance with the conditions and the agreements that were required by the different approvals, that it might be a good exercise, and maybe we need to talk about how best to do it most efficiently, but, that, both for, for you all, but then for the town as well, to make sure that we've checked all the boxes, so I don't know if that's something, if the planning boards, it, it makes sense since they're gonna be coming back to the board, if that's something that they'd like to have us work on, John and I could perhaps do some introductory discussions with the, the new management team, however you guys wanted to do it.
And thanks, Paul, that would all be part of what we would do relative to part of master.
That's what I figured, yeah.
So, you're gonna check all those boxes all over again anyways to go through and validate all of them?
All right.
I'd be willing to give us a choice.
Good.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Well, we can, we can honestly tell you, we probably have a bit of a leg up on you because we've, we've started that, that process of, of sifting all the resolutions and figuring out.
Sure.
What was required, when it was required, so, we have a, a pretty good leg up on you, we would, if it's okay with the board, be willing to share it with you and, and, you know, facilitate your review.
Yep.
That way, you don't have to start from scratch.
That'd be amazing, that'd be awesome.
All right, so, we, we can, we can work toward that goal.
Perfect.
And we, we'll use, if it's all right with you, we'll use Patrick as the, the center point, it seems like.
Yep. We talk every day, so.
Yeah, well, and I talk every other day, so, we're in good shape, brother.
Thank you.
All right.
I just have one question.
Sure.
I noticed in your plan, you eliminated townhouses, was there a reason for that?
No desire from, from anyone that's buying real estate at Silo Ridge to have a townhome versus condo, and it's really, really simple.
So, they're?
There's just not a market for it.
Okay, I'm just wondering, I saw there's a big zero there, so.
So, there, there are, there are people out there that want to have a townhome, but you think about it, reality, they want a more of a lock-and-leave kind of condo situation, so, as we kind of evaluate, we may want a couple of townhomes but not many, and.
So, there are no townhomes, townhouses?
If, if you, if you approve their D and E consolidation, you will be eliminating the last of the townhouses in, in this first phase.
But, beyond that, we're, we are planning a couple of additional townhouses, but we know that that market's real, really, really small.
Yeah, what we found, to answer your question, is that people that want to own a home, want to own a home, or people that want lock and leave, they want a town, they want a condo, that, that middle ground and the price point doesn't make sense for people, but that being said, we are gonna build a few in the, in the site plan when we get back, we just moved them to a different place, proposing to.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just a question, sorry, on what you had said about vacant homes?
Yeah.
Are you saying that they're completely vacant or are these just not homes that are occupied right now?
They're used during the weekends.
Yeah, okay, that's what I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Pure and curiosity, do you know how much of, of the total as-built is residential versus common buildings, club buildings?
It's almost 50/50, but.
50/50, wow, okay.
Just based on what's been built today.
Right.
Okay, thank you, board members.
One last item, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll be very quick with it.
Patrick.
It's to address condos D and E, we have a submission pending in front of you, Mr. Andrews has provided comments on that, we're in the process of addressing those comments now, they were relatively minor, I checked in with Mr. Andrews this week to see if he had had any additional comments on the submission, having provided some more time, he said the comments provided were the substantial comments and we should work with those, a couple of questions I have from, for staff, and one would be, Paul, do you have any comments on that original submission in addition to John's, we're trying to get a submission together for potentially next week, one of the things we want to do is give the planning board and the staff a heads-up on what's going on in the future and what our timing is so that we can adjust to meet your needs and vice versa, so our goal would be to submit next week and allow about three weeks, instead of trying to do that deadline with 10 days or whatever, allow three or four weeks for the review, which would put us back in here around February 5th, hopefully for completeness, consensus, and scheduling the public hearing for potentially the 23rd.
Have we seen that?
Yes, you have.
February meetings are the 12th and the 26th.
You, you have seen it, you have seen it, you got a comment memo from me, I think Paul had, had a, October, right?
Yeah, it was October.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll look that. I'll look that. Okay, and?
And, and basically, just, just to put this in perspective, just to follow up on what Patrick is saying, is what they are looking to do is remove the townhomes in, in the, the village core and replace them with two condo buildings, and it, it's consolidated space, it's, it's, it's a better opportunity, the, at one point in time, there were changes to the elements around it, but right now, there are no changes to those elements, it's just the consolidation of the townhomes, and, and basically, what it was is VHB, the design engineer, basically cut out the townhomes and whatever the puzzle piece was that existed, they plugged the condos in, so, utilities matched, drainage matched, landscaping matched, there's a couple walking trails and other things that didn't, but where the real complications lie, and, and I think Patrick's been able to sort most of them out, deal with the subdivisions and the dedications and who got what in terms of easement, so he's spent a lot of time sorting that out, and, and the only real major issue I had is they made some modifications to the storm drainage as to how things connected, where things connected, and because a lot of it is existing down below, we just need to verify that everything works, so that's where he was heading and doing that, but this was something that you did see, we went through it, and we believe it's relatively, and I think we were, we were thinking that it's, it's right in the consistency statement, there's no, no substantive changes, it's really just taking one building type and ownership type and replacing it with another.
To that end, for, as John mentioned, there's a fairly complicated land use change with deeds going back and forth and easements, things of that nature, my question to you is, do you need copies of draft deeds at this point for a completeness review, or can we complete that, you know, following the public hearing? Can I only ask you that because I didn't want to get here on the 12th and then say?
I, I don't think we need the deeds yet, but I think we need the concept plans and we need it, we need, we need an outline of what will be required going down the road.
We can, we can outline.
Because I, I don't want, I don't want to end up having a deed and then have a public hearing and somebody say, I want to move this 20 feet that way, and you guys, oh yeah, and then all of a sudden we gotta rework it, so, I think we need a basic plan, we need a basic outline, and the deeds and easement descriptions and other things will flow from there.
And is that consistent with past?
Yes, yes, the last thing that was done, the last thing that was done was the deeds and easements, once we got everything else in place and agreed upon.
Okay, that makes sense. That's perfect, then we will be submitting, I, I just wanted to make sure before I committed to submitting next week that we didn't need copies of all the draft deeds, in the submission itself, if it's good with the board, there's already a submission that's been submitted, the plans are not revising, but what we're doing is we're providing supplemental information, we're gonna be providing raindrop plots to address John's stormwater, updated subdivision map, and it, I think it would be easier if we just submitted those materials and did not resubmit all, all the plans.
What I would, what I would, one request I would make is I would prepare one complete package for Judy here, so in case any of the members need to come in and take a look at the complete package, I, I think, so that what you have supplements what was previously submitted, but rather than go play hunt and peck, you complete, assemble one package and it can be maintained here at town hall, so everybody can review it.
And can you send a digital copy?
Yes, we, we always send digital and hard copy through, but what we're going to do is just make the resubmission here, just the supplemental information and not put in the 30 pages of plans that are not being touched at this point, it just seemed, you know, more confusing, that's good with everybody, that's what we'll do for next week. Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for your time this evening, we hope this was helpful, and we'll see you in a bottom line.
Yes. What's next? Something's written on here. Agriculture discussion?
Rosanna.
Rosanna, you're up, you're an actually.
So, we at the Town Board got a, got an email from a woman by the name of Jennifer Fimble, she is the Duchess County Ag Navigator, and I'm just gonna read you the email because it's the shortest way to get all the information in, it says, "Good afternoon all, I am the Duchess County Ag Navigator and a resident of Armenia, one of the items I would like to accomplish is to have either a town meeting for residents, agricultural producers, and owners, and town officials, or prefer just a meeting with town boards or both, my goal is to provide information and answer questions about agricultural districts, ag assessment, what the right to farm law is and does, balance the tax base." balance of the tax base pertaining to agriculture and other agricultural laws. I am gauging interest and will schedule accordingly. Please reach out if this is a discussion you might be interested in having. I thought, considering the fact of the projects that you have coming down the pipe, that it might be something that you guys would be interested in as well. If that's the case, I will happily send you on the information."
Yeah.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Rosanna.
Thank you for that. I have a question, just a quick question on something else before we get to the minutes. The conservation analysis for, well, really anything, but the conservation analysis that's currently in front of us for Cascade Creek, does that get referred to the Conservation Advisory Commission? I mean, isn't that essentially what their job is, is to be reviewing those sorts of things? We have a commission that does that.
I don't think that's, it's not required as part of the zoning law, I don't believe.
I don't know.
But certainly if the board wanted to get that input, be able to do that, yeah.
Seems like something that we should probably be doing as a matter of practice, right? And that's why they're there.
I have no objection to it. As Paul said, it's not, it's not a requirement in the code. The onus is placed clearly on the planning board. But obviously, if there is an empowered board and it, it meets regularly and functions, then I, I would just recommend that the board just authorize Judy to take the conservation analysis as it currently exists and forward it to them for their input.
Yeah, consistent with the zoning law. And I, I actually, I mean, as a, as an attorney, I try to stay away from making suggestions like a planner would, you know, well, you really ought to look at this. I try and just highlight the issues. And I think John probably feels the same when it comes to the conservation analysis. So if you have a group that's like, that's their focus and they can help you identify the resources that should be protected, I think that would be worthwhile.
I would like to make a motion that we, as a matter of practice, refer conservation analyses to the Conservation Advisory Commission and specifically the one that's in front of us, the Cascade Creek Subdivision Conservation Analysis.
Need a second on that?
I'll second it.
On the favor. So you're going to send it to Judy, okay? The motion except the minutes are 12, 11, 24. Were there any corrections or deletions or anything?
I sent a bunch to Judy. There was a bunch of stuff in there that like, maybe John should take a look. That like, John said this and John said that. I'm pretty sure that John didn't say that, so just check it. I sent you, I emailed you that, John, you weren't here. Like, that was super weird.
Did you, did you by chance send it to me?
I think I did.
I'll have to track it down.
I'll send it again.
Okay, I'll take a look at it, work with Judy.
Corrections?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
On the favor. With that all being said, once again, a reminder of anyone with a chimney, get your chimney cleaned, check your smoke detectors, it's the season. Anyone on TV sees me, please do. Because we've been out on chimney fires just recently here in the town in mutual aid. So let's do the right thing and help the, help the firefighters out in this town, please. And with that being said, I need a motion for adjournment. Next meeting is when?
22nd.
22nd. See y'all on 22nd, motion for adjournment.
Make the motion up in your adjournment.
Second. On the favor. All right, see you in three seconds.